Evening. I'm going to open the December 11th, 2018 Planning Board meeting. And we will start with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for Albert Trudell, SEC Realty Trust, eight lot subdivision 141 South Main Street, map 14, block 1, lot 4. And Mr. Zilch, you're up.
I do have large...
Oh, that's good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Charlie Zilch from SEC and Associates, again here on behalf of Terry Trudell from SEC Realty Trust, LLC, with a continued public hearing for his proposed subdivision of tax parcel 14-1-0-4 located at 141 South Main Street. You may recall, we were here back in November, and I introduced the proposal to subdivide this 24.6 acre lot into eight total single-family residential building lots, basically utilizing the 1,200 feet of frontage that we have along 108 and Pheasant Lane. So, I'm sorry, it was, I think it was October when we met, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
No, it was November when I was in here last night.
Yes.
It was November, okay. Yeah, so, kind of went through the plan, talked about, you know, the existing conditions, what we're proposing here, the state permits, the four shared driveways, kind of went through all that. If anybody wants to talk about it in any more detail, but I think we're pretty much all up to speed on that. Okay. So, we're basically tasked with, at that point, we had a couple of comments from some of the local reviewers, we met with Conservation at that point, we're still dealing with some of the state departments on some of the applications. So, I resubmitted some revised plans, we made a few changes based on all those different comments. And if you'd like, I'd just kind of go through that...
That would be great.
...that letter that I submitted and just kind of, you know, and feel free to stop me at any time if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
So, basically, like I said, we resubmitted the plans, couple significant changes, and then a bunch of little minor changes, and I'll kind of go through the more significant ones first. So, as you can see, and I'll just read this verbatim right off the response, says, "The proposed shared driveway serving proposed lots 14-1-4-5 and 6 located across from Wentworth Drive has been modified so the driveway will now only serve Lot 5. The proposed shared driveway serving lots 14-1-4-7 and also the remaining land, or the backland 14-1-4, has been modified so the driveway will now also serve Lot 6." So, basically, we made the shared driveway across from Wentworth, now a single access, and then added a third onto the southerlymost driveway. Pretty much, that's everything, everybody here was looking forward to having us do that, and DOT was on board with that as well, they also had made the same request. So, as a result, one single driveway and then the three shared driveway. So, to address the increased use, meaning we're going to have three people on one driveway, as well as address the length of the driveway, which is a little bit of discussion last time, we've made a couple of changes. I met with the fire chief and kind of pitched a couple of things here. So, the driveway will now be a 20-foot wide driveway, and that'll allow ease of access for emergency vehicles, as well as two-way traffic going in and out of the driveways, particularly when you have three people on there. Additionally, the driveway will now incorporate a turnaround designed approximately just about 200 feet south of the furthest lot. And that driveway turnaround is designed to meet basically the largest fire apparatus, so they could come in, completely turn that around, back around, and then come back out without having to go up into the house lot. And it gives them just another point of turn here. And like I said, at 20 feet wide, it allows two fire apparatus to pass each other, or emergency vehicles, things like that. So, I've designed these, kind of modeled on what I had done in the towns of Atkinson and Kingston. They meet NFPA standards. We designed it with a cross-section that'll support about an 80,000-pound vehicle, which is about the largest apparatus that you have. So, like I said, they meet NFPA standards. When I met with the chief, he's not thrilled about long driveways, to be perfectly honest with you. He realizes there's no real restriction on it. He asked me to do the best I possibly could. I talked to him about this. He said, "Well, I think that's about as best as you can do." So, he was receptive to it, so I incorporated that into the plan.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Is there going to be a note on the deed for the property 4-6 that says that that is a turnaround for emergency vehicles and not to be used for a parking area for trailers, boats, campers, whatever?
It's a great point, and we'll do that. Yeah. I remember when we did the driveway in Kingston, that was kind of a strange layout. It was one access point off of 111 that served six house lots.
Oh.
It was, yeah, the way that all came together, very long story. But that was something we put together, we put together like a homeowner's agreement on that one, and that also had verbiage in it, similar to what you were asking for. So, I don't see any problem, we could take that, adopt that to this particular application.
Okay.
Let me just note that.
Okay. All right. Ms. Rowden just said it could also be noted in the driveway easement.
Right.
Okay.
Does our lawyer look at the verbiage in driveway easements? Like, do we have any input to that, or they just develop those themselves?
Typically, you've had easements reviewed by your town attorney, yes.
Right. That was my question. If we can put that stipulation in there or whatever.
Well, they still need to go and get the driveway permits from the road agent.
Yeah, but he's talking about...
Well, the state has to give them permits.
Oh, no, I guess you have to get them from the state. It's a state road, yeah, right.
But I'm talking about like the turnaround part and, you know, just all that shared verbiage.
Normally, something is noted on the plans.
Right.
If they fail to do it, then it becomes a civil issue with the new property owner. I mean, we can request that they supply us copies of all easements as part of the adoption process.
Right. Because if that's a stipulation, that that is a turnaround for fire, like you just said, fire vehicles...
Right.
Should be written somewhere or...
Yeah, that...
If you noted on the plan?
Yeah, I think we should probably have it as a note on the plan, as well as it should correlate to the driveway docs that go along, that are going to be recorded along with this. So, that's certainly not a problem. And so, unless there's any more questions about the driveways, I'll move on to the drainage.
So, that long driveway, it's 20-foot wide at the 108 end.
Yes.
But after the turnaround, it gets narrower?
It does. It goes back to a smaller width. One of the big reasons is less wetland impact for that. But at that point, you're about 200 feet away from the house. So, it's not that far at that point.
And that driveway is crossing the wetland at a, an existing wetland crossing now?
It is. Granted, we have to expand on that a little bit, but we're trying to minimize impact wherever we can. And so, if there's already disturbance, we try to cross where there's already disturbance. So, it knocks down the overall impact. I think we're around 5,000 square feet for all the, if you add them all up, I think it was seven crossings here, not really particularly crossings, but impact areas on either sides of existing driveways, things like that. So, kept the impact down as much as we possibly could. So, the other issue that we had discussed is regarding the drainage and the impact to that culvert under Pheasant. And so, basically, just again, I'll read this as I submitted it. So, "In an effort to ensure that the improvements proposed to this property do not increase stormwater flows at the culvert crossing under Pheasant Crossing, several changes have been made. As noted in the attached response letter, which I submitted along with this, in drainage calculations provided by Jim Hanley of Civil Design Consultants, several infiltration basins have been proposed throughout the site. As demonstrated, these infiltration basins effectively attenuate peak flows at that culvert as requested." And he also added note 14 on sheet 1, that the maintenance of the proposed structure shall be the sole responsibility of the property owners. So, to kind of expand on that a little bit. So, what you have is basically have, you know, Jim Hanley does his pre-existing calculations or pre-developing calculations, comes up with a stormwater number with the impact that is in culvert. And so, what we try to do is design some drainage structures in here to capture the additional runoff that you're going to have when we introduce additional impermeables, such as homes and driveways. And so, the best way to do that is capture them in these infiltration basins, just capture areas of sheet water flow. Some of it is a natural flow, some of it is flow that we're going to direct with the driveways and swales. And get it into an area that slows down that peak runoff, captures it, slows it down, treats it, and then releases it over a longer period of time at a slower rate. So, ultimately, the goal was is to not to impact this. And so, that's what he was able to do through this calculation by adding infiltration bases. We have three of them. There's one of them on Lot 3, right here in the front. There's another one located behind the building area on Lot 7. And then, we have one that kind of spills onto the back lot and also the back porch of the lot. So, and then, basically, it's just an exercise in earthwork to basically create a depression. You have a berm on the backside of it, and then you provide a, basically, an overflow structure or an outlet structure. And then, you know, the water is allowed to release at a slow rate should there be a significant storm event, like a 100-year storm event. If the water fills up in these basins, they overflow into the top of the outlet structure, then they're allowed to release at a quicker rate, so that they don't have any sort of backup or dam breaking there.
So, what...
Safety features built into them. And as far as maintenance of them, like I said, it's pretty much just a demonstration in earthwork. And all you do is really, you don't even have to mow them. They pretty much have to keep trees and things like that from growing in. So, you just got to keep them somewhat weedy. And it's a typical structure. It's really no different than pink area cross over. So, it's just a safety feature. That's something else that we'll have written into the document as well.
On the deeds, the maintenance, yeah. That's one of my questions.
Take care of those. So, I know Mike has had a chance to look at those. He emailed back and said that he was, had reviewed the calculations, reviewed the proposal, and I think he was all set. I don't know if he'd ever gotten anything.
So, what kind of a storm are they designed for?
What's that?
How large a storm are they designed for?
I think we're looking at a 50-year event, from what I saw in the, in the cogs.
Yeah, so the drainage calculations are a 50-year, 24-hour storm event.
Yep. It's pretty significant rainfall.
And the, is there a culvert under the driveway at the upper wetland crossing?
There is one right here.
Not the long driveway?
Oh, the long driveway. Yeah, there's a culvert right here at the roadway, which is a runoff that comes down through here. And then, this is, this was an existing culvert. We're going to replace it with a, you know, a culvert actually.
So, those have been designed for current kinds of storms?
Those culverts are actually a little bit overdesigned. Because one of the things that we had to deal with is with natural heritage inventory. You submit your property to them, they review it, and if there's any occurrence of any rare endangered species anywhere within the vicinity of the property, I think it's within a mile. And in this case, the occurrence is of blending turtles. So, one of the things that we were asked to do is to oversize the culverts so that they could actually be embedded into the stream bottom, so that a natural bottom fills in the culvert, so that when these animals hatch and they tend to migrate, they have a place, they're not going to be basically held back by the culvert. They'll have a natural bottom within these culverts, promotes that migration. It's one of the other things that we've designed into this.
Both for the, for the lower wetland and also that upper wetland crossing?
All the culverts.
All of them?
All of them, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and so, okay, so, I finished, I guess, what I had to say about that, but I feel that Mike had looked at it. I don't know if he'd sent over any sort of correspondence to you, Jen, or the planning board?
Yeah. And he was all set with the changes, with drainage calculations added.
Any other questions about the drainage? And then, Charlie brought up a point last time. There is an easement on this property. It's basically an access easement that was granted by the Owens to the Woodhouse. As you know, the Owens were the former property owner. Woodhouse owned all that property behind, now currently occupied by Mr. Bazanson. There was an agreement that was put together back in 89 that we dug up and with Jamie's help, he supplied us some documents. There was also an unrecorded plan that showed what the access easement was, is, you know, where the location of it roughly. There's an old wood trail that's more or less abandoned. You don't even really see it anymore. But it ran from here basically to the Woodhouse property in the back. That agreement basically left it up to the future property owner here, in this case, Terry Trudell, our current property owner, the right to relocate as necessary. So, it basically made note that that easement does exist. It is in effect. Nobody's ever made any effort to extinguish the easement or anything like that. So, is, from my understanding, Jamie has the right to pass and repass over the property. It was designed originally because there was no access to that portion of the Woodhouse's property. They since had acquired more land that got them all the way back out to one of the main roadways. So, just because they got access in a different way doesn't mean that easement goes away. The easement still is in effect. At some point, whether Mr. Trudell and Mr. Bazanson get together and extinguish the easement, or they lay out a different location of the easement that benefits Mr. Bazanson, that's kind of up to them. But right now, all we really need to do is just make note of it. It's there. I would think at some point, Mr. Trudell would probably want to clear up where that easement is, especially if he's, you know, once these lots have been subdivided, if he's going to start selling these lots. I think it kind of clouds the sale on him. People will be like, "Well, where's this easement?" So, I think it'll be in his own best interest to clear it up one way or another, whether, like I said, they get rid of it, or they define it.
But really, shouldn't it get cleared up before the subdivision takes place?
Well, that's a great question.
On which lot?
Well, that is, that is a good question, but...
Yeah, I mean, you know, it just sort of, you've got seven people who own property and the easement's someplace.
Right. No, I understand what you're saying, but I know also that there's a potential that something may happen with Mr. Bazanson in the backland or something like that. So, I think they're kind of in negotiation on that. But if the board wants to see something cleared up prior to, that's fine, too.
My other thought is if we get that shared driveway is in the easement, now you have an easement, a common easement, now you have a shared driveway, right?
So, unless an easement actually specifies where it's located, which, based on the terms of this, it doesn't, I've not seen the documents, it doesn't sound like it. As long as the, both property owners are allowed to pass and repass, and it can be moved anywhere on the property, or in this case, multiple properties, you're not extinguishing easement. The subdivision actually doesn't impact the...
But it changes which of the new owners is bound by the easement.
Correct, but while, since they're under the same ownership at this point, it actually doesn't until they go to...
Until there's a subdivision. Once it's subdivided, then it makes a difference.
Once it's transferred ownership, it makes a difference.
Right. Well, then, shouldn't something be in the language for, I unfolded it, for the lot that has the long driveway on it and the lot behind it about that easement?
I mean, if this plan was recorded, say, the board was so inclined to approve the plan, it gets recorded, and Mr. Bazanson and Mr. Trudell get together, they could basically say, "Well, the easement is as shown on," or, I mean, the easement's going to be located in that shared driveway across the property as shown on this plan." Or they could file another plan that defines that based on this information.
That sounds good, but I mean, in the same respect, doesn't something have to be on, on the deeds for those two pieces of property where, when somebody that they don't know all of a sudden starts going down their driveway to use that easement?
Well, I guess, you know, maybe one of the simplest fixes is, at this point, we could show that easement on the plan traversing down this driveway or across the property line and up to Mr. Bazanson's property. We could just show a 12-foot wide defined easement on this plan, subject to change. I mean, they can change it afterwards.
I'm still concerned about, for instance, the person on Lot 2. Right now, the way it's worded, the easement could be moved there.
It could be.
And so, that, if the guy who buys Lot 2 now, he might have an easement come across his land someday without any control of that.
Right. But then, it's no longer Mr. Trudell's property. He retains the remaining property. I don't, that's a good question. I guess I really don't know the answers to that one.
To me, I think that's a question I think that needs to be cleared out before the subdivision takes place.
I mean, technically, it would, it would follow the subsequent deeds, and it would allude to the fact that there could be, and I understand your concern, you're saying that that's how, it would follow the deed.
But it would follow all of them?
Yes. Which honestly, a buyer should be looking into that when their mortgage company is doing their deed research, and that may cause problems with selling it. So, clarifying, it's probably good for the property owner.
And can we allow a shared driveway to be put in within this driveway?
I mean, honestly, I think Charlie's suggestion might be a quick solution, but...
I missed that question. I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Can we allow one of those shared driveways to be within that easement? I would think not, because...
So, you could have a driveway easement that also has an access easement on the same location?
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, you know, probably the simplest fix here is just to define the easement up the driveway across the back and up to Mr. Bazanson's property. And then, at any point in time, they can come back and change it, you know, file another plan, extinguish the easement that's shown on this plan, whatever they want to do. It's, the agreement is between the two property owners.
But the problem is that this property is going to get subdivided. So, it's not, now you've got seven property owners.
And so, the terms of that easement could, I guess, potentially snake across all of those property, I mean, that would not be...
Right. I mean, that's my point, and that's why I think you need to clear this up.
Or if they no longer need it anymore, you said they have other access...
Extinguish it or define it on a specific lot or lots.
You know, I tend to agree with that. I think I should just define it on this plan. Because somebody could build a health building right in the middle of my area. Right. And then, all of a sudden, the individual comes back and they want their easement to be there. Your structure's right in the middle of my area, so it should be cleaned up now. Okay, that's fine. No, I agree. I think we should. Okay. Now, you know, skip ahead on one. We did meet with Conservation on this, and they had a couple of follow-up comments. They're pretty happy with the changes that we've provided. They do want to see a wetland seed mix at the wetland crossings, and so, we'll gladly do that. And then, the other one is, they wanted us to limit as much cutting with the driveways, I should say, the southerly driveway in the area of Pheasant Crossing. Just the less disturbance down there, the better it is for retention of stormwater flows, things like that. So, I certainly agree with that. We'll add a note to the plan, or either, or maybe even create some sort of a buffer around there, just to, of an area of limited cutting, to kind of preserve that area. And I think that was about it. I know they're here tonight. If they have any other questions or comments.
Well, I was at the Conservation. I think it was like seeding in general, even on the swales and the, like, any reseeding that they're doing, because there was an invasive, right in the plan, it said this could be invasive in a wetland situation. So, I'm like, well, why are they going to use that if it's invasive? I don't think we'd want to add any invasive vegetation. So, to use like a...
Okay. And then, like I said, we've got a couple of things we're going to add to the documentation. So, I still have an attorney working on that, and that's something we can refer to the board. And that's about it. We've resubmitted everything back to the Wetlands Bureau. Plans have gone back to DOT, waiting for approvals on that. And then, state subdivision approval is basically pending receipt of the dredge and fill permit. So, they're all set with it. So, no waivers, again, meets all zoning requirements, so there's no need for any variances, just a few odds and ends to finish up at this point, I would think.
Have you received your driveway permits from the state yet?
No.
Okay.
No. They've, they kind of gave it a prim preliminary approval. They allowed us the four driveway curb cuts. We sent up sightline plans. Initially, they reviewed that. They asked that we add a snow line on there showing two feet of snow, that we still meet our site distance requirements. That wasn't an issue, so I've resubmitted it. I've kind of held off waiting to see what the board's decision was going to be on the amount of lots being served by each individual driveway. So, since that last meeting, when you asked that we move the access to Lot 6 to the southerlymost driveway and make that Lot 5 a single driveway, I hadn't sent any plans back to DOT. I was kind of waiting for that decision. So, since that was done, and we made some other changes, I've wanted to send the latest and greatest plans up to DOT. So, I sent out that probably about a week or so ago.
I like your revised driveway plans. I think that seems much better.
Yeah. Unfortunately, with District 6, it's just a slow process.
Right.
It ping-pongs between Concord and Durham, and it takes some time. I mean, once you get, once they tell you the permit is in the queue, sometimes you're waiting another month, two months. It takes a long time, yeah.
Ms. Rowden?
So, at this point, you have not accepted jurisdiction of this plan. You are waiting for the drainage to be calculated under Pheasant Lane. So, at this point, I think it's a complete application.
Do I have a motion to accept jurisdiction?
I'll move to take jurisdiction.
So, the Wentworth can accept jurisdiction, and then they can have public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hamel, seconds. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, unless you have further questions at this point, I would open it up to the public.
Right, yeah. Does the board have further questions?
I can wait till, I have a couple of other things I want to talk about, but I can wait till after public and then...
You want to talk about them now, so you might say it to public.
Well, it's some technical kind of stuff, like the, on note 14, it says, it talks about the owners of the lots that have the drainage structures.
Sure.
I'd like to see that, not only a note on the plan, but also a requirement that it go into the deeds for those lots, that sort of people are, people who buy property, once in a while, they read the deed, they pretty much never look at the plan. And that would put them on notice that they're responsible for maintaining those.
That's part of my ongoing list of conditions.
Okay. And my other very technical thing is, at the bottom of several of the pages, it says sheet 1 of 3 to be recorded. And you've got like five sheets that say that sheet 1 of 5 to be recorded. That's a real...
I think it says 1 and 3 for recording.
Oh, oh, okay. I, I, see, that's what happens when you try to read the little print instead of looking at it at full size.
Well, you certainly could request other sheets, those are the two main sheets.
But there's still more than three of them anyway that say that.
No, it says sheet 1 and...
And 3 are intended for recording.
Oh, and that says it on all the sheets, okay.
Right.
There you go, okay. Thank you. That answers that question.
Sheet 1 and 4.
Okay.
I need a better magnifying glass.
Any other board questions here right now? No? Okay. Do we have any of others that would like to speak? Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? All right. You can come up to the podium and identify yourself, please.
My name is Alicia Galen. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. And I want to thank Charlie for being willing to work with the commission and making some changes that we were looking for. Just to reiterate that, it was, as Sandy was saying, we want only native seed mix, for example, New England wetland seed wet mix or erosion control mix or equivalent. A note like that would be preferable. But definitely no reed canary grass, which is the invasive plant. The other thing was, there was a discussion at the Conservation Commission meeting about whether or not EPA stormwater construction general permit applies to this project, and it actually does. I went to EPA's website, and under "Who is responsible for getting permit coverage," it says, "Your site will disturb one or more acres of land or less than one acre of land..." it says you, your site will disturb one or more acres of land, or less than one acre of land, and is part of a common plan for development or sale that will ultimately disturb one or more acres of land. So it seems pretty clear that if he's, I can't imagine you're going to be disturbing less than an acre for all eight lots. So he will need to file for the construction general permit, and have a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and all of that. I guess that's it. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
A fairly typical condition you guys have is that all state and federal permits are obtained as noted on the plan?
Right.
And any conditions they have subsequent to?
Now that I've gotten that note read right, you're actually going to have to also record page four.
Absolutely right.
Because page three is only half of the plan.
That's right.
You're going to have to... What?
You beat me to it.
Okay. Okay.
The one thing about, in regards to the stormwater comment, I would like to at least find out if, say if Mr. Trudell went in and developed one lot, and then that lot was stabilized and seeded, loam seeded and everything, and then moved on to the next lot, if that would still require a NFTs permit? Because it wasn't really clear from what she read. I understand what, you know, you take the property as a whole, there's probably more than an acre worth of disturbance there.
But you're talking about not disturbing it all at the same time?
Yeah, exactly. So I don't know if there was, did it say, did it read on any further from that?
I think that if you wanted to make that argument, there would need to be something in your decision saying that he can only do one at a time, or as many as it's less than an acre. Because you guys don't want to have to be in charge of making sure that at any time you're not going over that cumulative one acre.
Right.
So the typical way that boards handle this is that you say any state or federal permit that is required. So I, if the NFTs permit is not actually required, then they can't, they can't enforce any EPA regulations. They can however, say, condition of approval is if they get any permits.
But then that puts the onus on the planning board to be policing, to make sure that there's never more than an acre that's opened up at one time. It would seem to me that it would be prudent for the board to put the onus on him, to just file the stormwater NOI, and then he can do it or not, or not, not do all those sites at once, or... Otherwise, how are you going to make sure that anytime he's not exceeded that one acre cumulative threshold?
I think we might be able to ask the Building Department to only issue one building permit at a time.
Well, I'm thinking they want to construct all their driveways and all their culverts all at one time. You're not going to bring in a little contractor to do one culvert over here, and then one culvert over there, and...
That's true.
You know, stuff like that. And then a driveway here, then come back later and make a driveway, so...
Yeah, right.
Typically with EPA and actually alteration of terrain permits, it's not just, you know, one at a time, it's what's the cumulative impact, and it's over the course of a certain number of years. With alteration of terrain, it's 10 years. I believe with NFTs, it might be the same sort of timeframe, but it may be something like eight years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, I could always, you know, like I said, look into it, but I could always add another note to the plan. Basically saying if the property owner elects to only disturb, or actually if he wants to, if he wants to develop the entire property all at the same time, then if so required, then he's got to file for a stormwater permit. If he only elects to disturb less than an acre at a time, then he doesn't have to file. Something, formulate a note somewhere along those lines.
I was just going to say, this property needs to be handled similar to the way we did with Sargent Woods, where as they completed and stabilized, they were allowed to...
Only disturb a certain amount, and it has to be looked at by the town engineer. And you say, okay, that's stabilized already, now you can go on to the next.
With Sargent Woods, they were actually having excavation occurring. And they could only do it for five acres. That's actually state law.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I know it was part of your...
Well, I just, I was just thinking of something that was cyclical like the Sargent Woods.
It would be hard to enforce on something like that. I'm not saying a note can't be added, but it would be hard to enforce that.
Well, wouldn't they, our engineer who does site visits, be able to see that that's being done?
Over what timeframe are you going to restrict developments? If they want to do two at the same time, but they're below thresholds for needing a NFTs permit from EPA? I'm just saying, it'll be difficult to enforce and justify.
Right, so the whole picture is, do they need that or not to start with, right? I'd say.
Well, I mean, if they have to get any state and federal permits, then that's one of the ones that's required, then they'd have to do that.
All state and local permits.
State and local, thank you. And I think that that would cover that.
I'm of the opinion that you need a stormwater plan.
Who's the arbiter of whether or not he needs a permit?
Ultimately EPA.
EPA.
But they're not going to, unless he asks, they're not going to even know that this is going on.
So do we need to request them to have one done, or they should just know to do one?
I think it needs, well, it's one of those things that's...
Well, a note could be added...
Stormwater management plan is usually a condition of approval, correct?
Right.
Not typically on a subdivision.
Well, how about a note as simple as this, should the developer owner elect to disturb more than an acre of this property, then he's going to be required to file a notice of intent?
Again, then that means, needs, it means we need to have somebody go out there and monitor it. I think that's the concern.
I can tell you one thing, it's going to cost them more if he does it that way. They won't have the time. Because you figure the people that come in to do the cotton, they want to cut them all at once, rather than one at a time.
Yeah.
That's number one. And then, what if he puts himself out of the market? And I could change it like that. It's probably too wise for him to do that.
To get a stormwater management plan done? He's writing.
I think by the requirements that Alicia read, you kind of have to. Because he's, this project is more than the one acre, right?
More than the acre, yeah.
Yeah, that's, it sounds like the right way to go.
Excuse me, what was the name of that?
The multi-section construction general permit, NFTs, and the...
Okay.
Thank you.
That's probably a construction general permit.
The easement, which lot was it located? First to this, the same person that had the fifteen, what?
We have a clean lot from Lake, right?
Yes, we do.
I was trying to find...
I thought so.
Well, in our regulations, there was that wording that's supposed to be on the recorded page about the shared driveway. It's in subdivision regulations somewhere, but I don't remember exactly what it said. And it should be noted, added to the plan. On my first one, I wrote the page number, but I don't have it anymore.
I'll page thirteen. A1B.
Oh, fifty common driveway here. These driveways was the first.
What's the note? Is it in the subdivision?
I'm looking something up for verbiage.
Page thirteen of subdivision under driveway and the next at the point.
It's eight, two, four, A, one, E. Really varied.
Can you read that, Sandra, please? Well, oh, I thought maybe it was just one line, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's...
The driveway is not within the building setback, it was in a wetland setback. Was any of these driveways in any of those?
One of them crosses wetlands.
Was it in the building setback?
The common driveways? No, because they're right on the property line.
It's okay?
Okay. Okay, I got something, it's really sort of throwbacked. Yeah, there is, there is a requirement for the note on the, on the plan there. About that the town's not liable if the emergency vehicles can't make it up the driveway.
Okay, so it's a liability note, okay.
But it says that, that note needs to be on the, on the plan.
Okay, we could add that, easy enough.
Yeah. It's not a, not a big deal, you just got to make sure you add it to the notes. The other thing is, if it were four houses, then you'd have to build it, the...
As a roadway.
But you've only got three, so that's...
Okay. Well, I kind of think at this point, I'm at the tail end of chasing down the state permits. Like I said, subdivisions conditionally approved. Sent up the revised plans to the Wetlands Bureau as well as DOT. I believe you're looking for us to file the notice of intent on this. I think that's kind of the final decision on that.
It can always be filed if it's not needed. Then it's not needed, and they will have met the condition.
What's this?
If the notice of intent for a stormwater permit is needed, and they don't, if they file it and they don't actually even need it, then technically the condition would have been met, or they need it, and they file for it.
Right.
Well, like I said, I could add a note to the plan that basically if it's required, we'll file for it. Plain and simple. And so other than, you know, some small odds and ends, I think we're probably in pretty good shape. I don't know if the board would be willing to entertain a conditional approval at this point.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me that's sort of hanging out there is the problem with the easement.
Okay.
That needs to get resolved somehow. Like you said, the other things all seem like, you know, add a few notes here and there, and...
I'm still, I don't really feel that the easement's that big of an issue. I think we can define it right up that shared driveway, along the property line and off to Mr. Bezanson's property.
But that, if you just put it on the plan there, from what you said of the wording of the easement, Mr. Bezansky can ask for it to be moved, and it would still be moved to, or is it...
The control of the location of the easement stays with the current property owner, which is Mr. Trudell. One of the clauses in that agreement from nineteen eighty-nine is he has the right to move that easement location wherever he needs to.
Okay, so he can move the easement anywhere he needs to.
He retains that ability.
So at this point, he can define the easement to go somewhere, and then that, that will then fall upon the purchases of those lots that it's on.
Yeah, so if it's defined on this plan, say if it runs up this driveway, across the back, and then out to Mr. Bezanson's property, well then obviously these lots will be unencumbered by it.
Right.
The only ones that would have any, that would be affected would be these two, obviously we have the right to pass through them, and then the back end.
Right.
So, and then at some point, we could file a plan if these two gentlemen so agree to extinguish the easement, we could file another plan in the documents to just eliminate the easement altogether.
However, that would be a codicil to a future deed. That wouldn't...
Right, right.
I have six items to conditions. If we want to entertain a conditional acceptance this evening.
I... Depending on how they word it, I might be acceptable to that.
And I'm sure I will move to accept the subdivision for conditional acceptance with the following condition. And the first four items will be noted on the plans as well as on each deed. That is a note regarding the upkeep of the infiltration ponds.
On each deed, that...
Right, that is appropriate, and a note that... The note on the plan needs to state which...
Which lot, right.
Right, yeah, I'll make that clearer in what I have.
There needs to be a note on the plan as well as on the deed for...
Lot six.
Lot six regarding the fact that the turnaround must be kept clear and cannot be used for storage. Item three would be language for the easement must be either defined or extinguished. Item four would be that there's a note on all the shared driveway deeds, and on here, absolving the town from liability regarding shared driveway and emergency vehicles. Item five is, there would be a note on the plan that should the developer choose to develop multiple lots. At the same time, they'll be required to file for a construction general permit. And item six is that all state and local permits must be obtained.
State, local, and federal?
Excuse me?
State, local, and federal?
State, local, and federal.
The thing that the Conservation Commission asked for about wetland seeding, yeah. Do you want that in there?
Yeah, I want to take that, definitely take that off, but not because that invades grass seeds.
What page are you on?
Oh, let's see, page thirteen, fourteen, on the... Oh, let's see, page thirteen, fourteen, on the wetting of the seeding and stuff. Which one are you saying? It's a native seed mix. You can specify a point one, wetland seed mix, wet mix or erosion control material.
Definitely no red canary grass.
This is the seed.
Note right here. No, they don't want that red.
All right, so it's already in there.
No, she wants the red canary grass out.
Right, you want to take it out. It's in some of those mixes. Unless you're just saying native seed mix. Right. No canary grass, no reed.
Oh, I read this as saying that they would not be using that.
No, if you read the chart above, it's included in some of those mixes.
Oh, okay. Okay, so what would be for me, note six would be no reed.
Red canary mix. Only native seed.
Is it red or reed?
Reed, but seed mixture should be of native, native seed mixture used.
So it would have the condition be that a native New England seed mixture or equivalent be used.
Record pages one, three, and four.
Right. Okay. That's usually not a condition, that's a requirement.
Yeah.
No, you can overcourt of a Mylar and you specify which sheet.
Right.
I want to talk about that note.
Which note?
The one about if he disturbs so much he has to, shouldn't he figure out if he has to do that first? Like, I don't think it's up to us to tell him if he disturbs more than something, he has to apply for that. He should apply for it anyway, right?
To be honest, I actually don't think, even if they were to develop all of this at once, I actually don't think that they need a construction general permit. I think there's some other criteria within that. But you can do the condition so that it's not, the onus is never on the town for enforcing federal permits or state permits for that matter.
And we do have the requirement that they get them. And there is the note about should he develop to, choose to develop multiple lots at the same time, he will be, he's required to.
Right, that was the note I was talking about. It seems redundant or.
But I think that the homeowner may have a pond for the road which could equally, could equally use a acre, just reverse them to homeowner, not even developing the lot.
Right.
The ponds that he's planning are small.
They are.
But you're disturbing, you know, he's disturbing. He's going to disturb a lot to make that pond and then, you know, make it the size it is.
The disturbance would be beyond the scope of.
Right, right.
The pond area.
Yeah.
Whether that would equal over an acre, I'm not sure.
But you figure this, what, 600-foot driveway? That's a lot of land to disturb.
Technically, you're disturbing more than one lot because of how the driveway runs along the property line.
So basically, that note that says if he's going to do more than one lot, he has to do more than one lot at a time. That's a three-lot driveway.
Three-lot shared driveway.
Right.
So he's technically already doing more than one lot.
Right. So basically, why don't we just say that he needs to apply?
Right, right, I was just going to say, change that condition to he needs to apply for that.
Well, that's federal.
That's covered by the all state, federal, and local permits.
But I think in this case, we want to make it additionally clear. I mean, it's, yes, indeed, it's covered by the general statement, but we also including a more specific statement about that. And like what Jen said, if he doesn't, if he applies and doesn't need one, that's all right too.
Okay. I change that to just item four will be a requirement to file for a construction general permit.
Do we want the attorney, the town attorney to look at the language of the easements?
Yes, we do.
Right.
And shouldn't that be then another condition?
No.
Because otherwise, then it won't happen. If it's not, if it's not a condition of approval, it won't happen.
They have to be supplied to us anyway.
But they've got to be reviewed and approved.
That's how you typically deal with homeowners associations or shared driveway easements.
Right, so since it's already in the ordinance, do we need to?
We need to tell them to do it before it's approved.
Number six. Number how many, seven?
We're up to nine.
Nine.
Most of them are just little things, so.
Attorney to review easement, driveway easements, is that what you said?
All easements.
All easements.
This is not, it's a driveway easement and it's this other thing.
So the attorney doesn't need to necessarily review the access easement, that's already an established recording easement. The driveway easement will be new.
But the access easement is going to be drawn on the plan, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think you need to put that there too.
No, because that's pre-existing.
No, it's moving.
It hasn't moved yet.
He's proposing that it's going to move.
Right, however, that is completely covered by a pre-existing legal document. We cannot require that that be changed.
We're requiring that he put it on the plan because it's part of the, it's part of the plan.
It's part of the plan, but we cannot, town council will review all new easements.
No, that's, I've moved on to number 10.
He didn't finish nine yet.
We cannot change or require change to the language of a pre-existing.
I'm not talking about language. I'm talking about a mark on the plan that shows where it is.
He already has the three or four, it's already on there, isn't it?
He wants it included on the plan where the easement, the current easement is.
Well, where the easement is going to be.
Okay.
Well, didn't you talk about that in number like five or four?
I was just going to say, wait a second here.
He already said something about that.
Should we start the list again? Read the list again.
Poor Gail, you got all these down?
I've got the list, my numbering changes included existing. Okay, this is what I have now. Notes to go on the deed are the upkeep of the infiltration ponds, the turnaround, the language for the turnaround not being used for storage and kept clear. The language for the existing easement needs to be either defined or extinguished and shown on the plan.
There you go, and showed on the plan.
So that gets rid of. Requirement to file for a construction general permit. Note adding, absolving the town from liability regarding shared driveways. Native seed mixture to be used. Mylar's of pages one, three, and four. And town council to review all new easement language. And all state and local permits.
Federal.
These notes were all state, that used to be the end of the list.
It's always the end.
Yeah, state, local, and federal.
State, local, and federal. That's what it says.
Okay, I have a motion for conditional approval. Do I have a second?
Can I just have one more question?
Yes.
Is it known that they shouldn't start construction until they get all those, like, driveway permits, right? The access to their property?
They can't do anything until the Mylar's signed and recorded anyway.
Yeah, I didn't know if we need to put that on.
And they can't record their Mylar until they have their permits noted on it, so when they can't get their permits noted on it, till they know if they got the permit.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
All right, so I have a conditional approval. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed?
Do you have a time limit on the conditional approval?
I'm sorry?
Is there a time limit on the conditional approval?
One year.
It's one year?
Yes. Yeah, it's one year.
It's one year.
One year.
Yeah, I'll rewrite these.
So you can read them?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you.
Wonderful.
We had discussion of stormwater management ordinance next, but I think I have, there's a couple.
Do I do the other things first?
Yeah, I'd like to do some of these other things first. I'd like to actually, let's do the approval of the minutes from 11:27.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Did you get that?
Yeah, for a second, shall I?
Yeah. Okay. Let me find my paper here. We had a request for road acceptance for Kinsley Corner. And we have a recommendation from the town engineer. He has said that the roadway construction has been completed in accordance with approved plans and he made a recommendation for a performance guarantee and said that it could be anywhere between 10 and 20 percent. So the board should decide whether they want to make it a 10 or a 20 percent. Well, hang on, let me finish this on this. The town engineer has said that this road might not have as much of an impact as other ones that we've required a 20 percent. Like where there's ongoing construction, like in the light industrial park. So that was, I mean, we have the option of doing it anywhere between 10 and 20 percent and so it's up to the board whether they feel like it should be 10 or 20 percent. 20 percent would be 43,170. 10 percent would be 21,585.
And you still have to add the other.
I'm sorry?
Then you still have to add the engineering fee and the contingency for that.
This is the same way?
No.
This is Kinsley Corner. Oh, you're right, you're right. And then we have to add the other, I'm sorry, thank you, hang on. Okay, so if it's 20 percent, he's recommended 51,372. If it's 10 percent, it's going to be.
So Charlie, your motion is to recommend to the board of selectmen that they accept the road and that we require $51,372.
So you want the 20 percent.
I'll second that motion.
You can come up and please identify yourself.
Yeah, Billy Violet with the road up there, Kinsley Corner. It's to my understanding that the 20 percent or up to the 20 percent is based on the bond that's left. It wouldn't be based on the cost of the whole road. The bond that's in there right now is only 32 or $33,000. That was for top coat gravel and a little bit of seeding. I'm not, I mean, I'm not going to come back with another $20,000 for you to hold for two years. That doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
This is for the road, not for.
I understand, but we've already got, we've already got, we've already got bond reduction as we built the road for performance and whatever. So the bond in place right now is for 32 or $33,000. So the 20 percent is, would be, the high side would be held on the 32 or $33,000. 20 percent of that.
It's for a different thing.
This is for roadway maintenance. This is a performance guarantee for roadway maintenance.
Correct, but you don't, I mean, I've done this so many times, you don't go backwards. You're going to, so you're going to ask me for another $21,000 because I completed my road on top of the 32 or 33 that you've already got? That doesn't make any sense.
Well, we can ask Mr. Bignelli to look at it again and maybe he reviewed it and didn't review the reduced number.
I do know that it is not on the remaining amount because what this does is it protects the town should the roadway have a catastrophic failure within the next two years. I would have no problem with going back to Mr. Bignelli and double checking. Well, actually, he quotes exactly here what it says. Section 9.3 of the subdivision regulation, the performance guarantee for roadway maintenance is required for a period of two years from the date of acceptance of the roadway in an amount no less than 10 percent, no greater than 20 percent of the improvement costs. And this is consistent with the requirements that we have had for other roads that we have accepted. It's a 9.3, section 9.3 of subdivision.
Yeah, it's maintenance bond. Pretty much.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do I change my motion if I can get my second reduced?
To what?
To no second.
What?
To no, I wanted to reduce to 10 percent.
Would you just withdraw the motion?
No, no.
He would like you to withdraw your second and make a new motion for 10 percent.
I'll withdraw my second.
He wishes to rescind his motion.
This says we're going to release the performance guarantee once we get the maintenance bond in place, right?
Yeah, they're two separate.
Right, there's two separate things.
One's building the road, the other is making sure the road is going to function over two years.
So although he's given us more money, we're going to give him back some money?
We're going to give him back money because the road got built.
Right.
You want to have different money.
Correct.
To make sure that the road's not going to crumble.
Right.
Which I doubt it will, but.
Right.
I'm taking everything back. I'm going to make the motion with a 10 percent, same motion, but with 10 percent.
Okay.
There's no additional money out of his pocket.
I think we, do we need to, we need to have a dollar amount on this?
Well, then, the engineer said we should ask for 20 though, right?
No, he said, the regulations say between 10 and 20.
It says the attached performance guarantee recommendation is for 20 percent of the road construction estimate. The 20 percent was used to determine the bond, which is consistent with recent other jobs that we, they do.
Yes, but those. Yes, but those recent other jobs have more impact than this because they have continuing proposed construction that could happen on those roads.
Right.
So...
So at 20%, it's the $43,170, right?
Right. Hang on a second. I'm trying to figure this out here. I'm not doing too good. I need to get my phone because I need to add this.
Are you still using his numbers? So you go by the 215, 850 at 10%? And then you add the engineering fee, the continuing fee?
Basically, what you're talking about.
We don't numbers while people are adding columns is not nice.
I'm trying to make it easy. It's already written on here.
You just take the $51,000 and divide by two.
Oh, thank you.
No.
I can't, you just take this to buy...
No, you can't do it that way.
It's 10% of that and then you add these.
It's half of $43,170 plus 17, 27.
Engineering fees and contingency does not change.
Right.
Right.
But no, those are, that's still, that's 4% of the 43.
So that's 4% of the 215.
Nope.
That's what I checked.
Okay.
17, 27 is 4% of $43,175.
Okay, so take 51...
Divide by two.
372 and divide by two.
Yeah, it's 25, 686.
No, he said there's no reduction in these engineering and contingency fees.
But they're based on...
On a percentage of the total.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's our new total?
So if you want to do 10%, it's 25, 686.
25, 686.
By the way, that's, we're just recommending that number to the board of selectmen to... I mean, the board of selectmen can say they want to hold 20%.
Right.
And I see some justification, like you said, that the Puzzle Lane thing was, there was still a lot of construction vehicles, a potential...
Correct.
And also... And it's also access to an industrial area.
Right.
This is a residential area with minimal use.
Correct, correct.
It's not even, it's not a main road residential even. It's just a little cul-de-sac.
Okay, so I have a revised motion for 10%, which is 25,686. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We will send that recommendation to the selectmen. Okay? Next item on the agenda is a road acceptance for Sarah's Way. We have a letter from the town engineer. And he also says that this is similar, where there's not going to be a lot of continuing construction. So he gave an estimate for 20%, but this could be 10% also because there's not going to be any more construction there.
Ah, there are...
Three houses, three?
Either three or four.
Yeah.
Are they all done now?
I believe so, yeah.
I mean, there's no more approved houses on Sarah's Way?
There's no more empty lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, the land is all used up. We haven't yet seen the deed for the park. Remember, there was a, there was a little bit of land. They put in a turnaround similar to what...
Oh, no, I don't remember that.
Just in here. And there was a funky piece of land that they decided, the developer decided, that they would donate to the town.
I don't even remember hearing that.
I want to say it's like 500 feet by 100 feet. And they were supposed to put a couple of back benches possibly there or...
I don't know.
It had to do with the configuration of the road.
And they, to get frontage or something?
Exactly. They had to do, work some sort of...
I don't know, okay.
I suspect I'm, am I the only person that's still on the board from when that?
I don't even, I don't even remember that. Well, anyway, but they're asking for reduction. And so we have a recommendation for 20% for Sarah's Way, which is $11,963. Or if you would like to make that 10%.
Well, to be consistent, I think we should do 10%.
The rationale for this road is the same as Kinsley, which is different from what we did.
Right. Would you like to figure out what the figure, what the amount is, please? Thank you.
5, 9, 8, 1.5.
Should we hold off until we get what Jim was talking about? Play it up?
Oh.
It would be interesting because we'd have to pull the original plan to see what that looks like.
Would that have anything to do with the roadway thing? I mean, maybe that's...
I would honestly suggest that since we have no ability at this point, we have no teeth in the matter. Along with the note to the selectmen recommending acceptance and the bond, we should also make a note to the selectmen to, you know, find out whether or not they have received any deed or easement to a tiny piece of property. It's sort of like...
But I think the selectmen would expect us to do the research and present them with the recommendation, rather than say, hey, go and look at this, too.
No, 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 no. It would be wise for us to pull out the plan and look and go, oh, yeah, this is, but the selectmen are the people who have the teeth that have to...
Yeah, but we shouldn't just tell them, go look. We should tell them what it is.
No, we're not telling them to go look. We're telling them to make sure that the town gets what is due. We will supply them not just the thing, but I'm sure.
But shouldn't we make sure that...
Gail's not looking at me with daggers in her eyes. We could pull the plan, photocopy the page that had that on it, and, you know, see reference. So the selectmen will make sure that if we're...
But shouldn't we find out whether or not we've got it and then make a recommendation to the selectmen?
It wouldn't have come to the planning board. It would have gone to the town.
Yeah, fine. We can still find out whether they got it or not.
Can I recommend you look at the plan and just make sure there was something even?
But yeah, I mean, we want to make sure that...
But it sounds like we have some questions and probably shouldn't make a recommendation tonight.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe we should hold off on this one to add other...
And find out what it is, and then we'll be able to make a recommendation.
Okay, so let's continue. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I have a question because when we were talking about the money and stuff for those, I thought we were voting on just to reduce the bond. But are we also telling the town they should accept the road?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, well, because see, that wasn't clear.
Because the town engineer said it's complete and it meets everything.
Right, but no verbiage in here to say anything about we were suggesting they accept the road. All it says is we're telling them to reduce the money, right? Yeah. So do we give recommendation to the town? Sorry, so that should be another vote, or at least it should be in the minutes that we're also recommending that they accept the road?
That was part of the motion.
Oh, it was? I thought it was only the money.
No.
Oh, I didn't hear that part. Okay. So I don't think we should accept the road then for Sarah's Way if we don't know if, like he said, if it's...
No, we're going to wait. We're going to, is the consensus of the board that we hold off on this one until the next meeting and we'll look up and see if we can find out?
Yes, and it looks like Gail has a question about the motion on Kinsley.
Okay, so we have no motion on Sarah's Way.
We have no motion on Sarah's Way. The motion on Kinsley was to accept the road and to set the amount of the bond.
Correct.
Yeah, recommend to the selectmen.
That they accept the road and...
And we will...
Not on Sarah's Way.
Nothing on Sarah's Way.
And we're going to revisit Sarah's Way next meeting?
Right, after somebody does some research.
After we look stuff up, right. Okay, great. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, manifests?
She's always fast.
Sorry. You weren't ready for me. Okay. NEPRA manifest for KV Partners. 141 South Main, Currieville, Kinsley, dah dah dah, $2,111.07.
What is the payment?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Operating budget, $19.26. I'm assuming that, yeah, that's postage to mail out the packets.
Move to pay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just was thinking about something when you said that.
Yes or no?
Yes, I vote yes for that.
Yes, okay. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
It was a question about stampage because it's going up five cents a stamp in the new year. Do we have any money left? We could buy stamps now and say five cents a stamp. Buy forever stamps now.
Right.
Yeah.
Instead of waiting until next year.
The postage.
You have the postage money, if that's allowable.
It's going to go up in nickel?
Yeah.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
January something. Do I have to make a motion? We buy stamps now?
That's a big hit.
Yeah.
That package was expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. I went to buy a roll of stamps at the post office and they didn't have any. And I'm like, why don't you have any rolls of stamps? They said, oh, everyone's buying them because they're going up five cents in the new year.
Oh, okay.
I'm like, oh.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good to know. I didn't even know that was going up. Gail has given us all a copy of the 2019 planning board schedule. And do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Just one thing on the calendar. I just noticed, and I mean, Lord knows, we've been working with these long enough. We really should, instead of calling one meeting a public hearing and one meeting a work session, they should just both be, they should both be called just public meetings.
Instead of work session, you want it to say public meeting?
And she wants the public hearing, you want it to say public meeting.
Right, because we have public hearings on... So many misreading this might look and go, oh, they only do public, stop, public hearings on the first meeting of the month.
And many planning boards, that's actually the case, as far as they'll only take applications on the first meeting.
Right.
Okay.
But we really don't make a distinction between activities.
Right, right. Okay, it's good. We can fix that.
So we need to adopt this, right?
I don't know. For your rules, I guess so, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So I will move to adopt the Newton Planning Board Calendar with that editorial change.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we have stormwater management. I'm not forgetting you, Jen.
We're really going to do this?
So we're not going to go through everything, but we're going to talk about the last part that we can talk about in a somewhat distinct fashion. So just so everybody's on the same page, we're talking about this just being for site plan right now.
Right.
So these will come in for anything that's a non-residential use or a multifamily use. That's what this would apply to.
Can I ask you a quick question? I thought we were going to put this in subdivision, too, or not yet?
We are, but we're going to, because it's going to look almost identical for subdivision, we're just doing the site plan ones first. And then we'll work on getting it into subdivision, which may just be the road. It may be all residential. Because of the nuance and political aspect of that, it's typically better to have that as its own conversation. So let's do site plan first.
Okay, thank you.
This is to go in the regulations, so it's...
This is to go in the regulations, not...
We adopted after public hearing.
Right, we don't have to worry about warrant.
This isn't a warrant article thing.
Right.
Right.
And we have to start now on page six on element D, correct? Is that where we left off the last time?
I haven't noted that we left off on element E.
Right.
Oh. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yes.
But that's actually a good place for, and we'll go back, before we do, we'll go back and go through the entire thing. This is a good, elements really, E, F, and G are a good concrete area to have a last discussion on.
We did D?
We did do some of it, yeah. I have notes on here, you're right.
I don't have notes on, I don't have notes on my note of D.
You may have missed that meeting.
Oh, maybe. I did, I did miss it.
Yes, there was a meeting that you missed.
Yes.
So we made it through D.
We'll come back through the entire document because I have a lot of the little typos and acronyms and moving stuff around that we've already discussed. Let's get through, if we can, E, F, and G, because they're not honestly as complex. What element E would be is actually what the stormwater management plan and site inspections would actually entail. So the first part would actually be the applicant providing an agreement that they would maintain all if there was a stormwater easement or drainage easement involved, that it would say that they are responsible for it. But it would also specify that the town is able to go onto the property and during emergency situations, actually able to maintain it. The onus is still, would be on the property owner. But it would also give the town the legal right to go on if need be.
Can I stop you for a second, Jen? Why don't you two come up here to the table? Take one of those chairs, roll the chair up, and you can come up because you want to listen to this, too. No, no, get a nice chair. Take that rolling chair. There you go.
Yeah, thanks, Jen. And I apologize, I don't actually have copies of this for you both to look at. But once we're all the way through this, I'll provide clean copies of which I can sit in the conservation commission as well.
Okay.
So it would be a stormwater management plan include the maintenance, the operation, and the inspection notations that we've talked about. And then also that we're going to detail a little bit farther on. But again, it means the onus is on the property owner to maintain. But the town, if need be, has the right to go in and inspect and to do maintenance in an emergency. Ideally, that will never happen, but it just allows it in case.
Okay.
This would actually become a legally binding document. You would have maintenance and operation as part of the approved plan set. You can have, if there is an easement that is needed, that can be recorded and also noted on the plan so that you'd have also reviewed through council. But it basically just states that the town has legal access to inspect the property to ensure their proper functions there being the stormwater management infrastructure and that, or to maintain onsite stormwater infrastructure when necessary to address emergency situations or conditions. Number three is that the property owner shall bear responsibility for the installation, construction, inspections, and maintenance of all stormwater management and erosion control measures. So the key thing on that, so the installation and construction are very commonplace. You'd do that with any type of infrastructure. The inspections, while it's being constructed, would fall under your general site development inspections that Mike does as part of his review when he's going out to sites. And maintenance, again, you're maintaining the infrastructure on your site. The inspection portion that we're going to come back to has two distinct, the inspection when it's being installed and the inspection further on that it's actually functioning as designed. So that's a different aspect that you may have some different opinions about who should be doing those inspections.
So you'd add these details later in another section or inside the statement?
No, this is the way it would be phrased. But the way we're going to actually come into element G with the inspections and maintenance responsibility, different towns like to do that different ways. I've got recommendations and things I've seen, but Newton is always a unique town, like every other town. So there may be things that the town prefers. And that actually getting some input from the building inspector, from Mike... getting some input from the building inspector, from Mike, and actually the select board, because you, the town can take on more responsibility for maintaining it, but that can come at a cost, literally, or it can take a little bit less responsibility and do it more administratively than actual engineering. But we'll get to that in just a second. As far as element F, the stormwater management plan recordings, so part of the management and erosion sediment control plan is it would be, the maintenance would be noted on the plan set, you would have it be recorded as part of the MIR. Item two under element F is actually something that's been really useful for code enforcement officers in a lot of towns, is that an actual written description, as far as what the stormwater management system should look like, so doing not only as built, but also a written description, so that if it is described in a certain way, more in layman's terms than engineering terms, a building inspector or a code enforcement officer can go out and actually take a look and see if something is functioning the way it is supposed to. And with most towns, code enforcement officers, while they are very well in tune, are not engineers. So that's kind of an optional aspect.
So you, you would delete the phrase that's in brackets?
Yes.
That's there just for our reading and reading it.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
All right, for element G, and this is, this is the, the point where towns have different opinions about should, let me just give you the range of options for, should the applicant just bear the onus, the way any infrastructure is, that it is to be built and maintained per its design, and its maintenance options should be part of the plan set, and then the owner of that property is supposed to follow that? That's sort of the lowest rank that you can do, and if they're not following it, the planning board or code enforcement can always go back and say, no, you are not following your plan as it was approved by the town. So that's that mechanism, that's that catch of making sure the infrastructure is making maintained. Some towns have taken the onus that because you want your stormwater infrastructure to function in the long term, that annually, a property owner has to actually certify that their stormwater infrastructure is being maintained and is functioning as designed and approved. So that can be done with just the property owner basically filing a little report to the town, and it typically works to have it on a, the same day every year, you have that noted on the plan as far as maintenance and inspection. You report to the town annually that your system is functioning as designed. You can require that they do that, but that a professional engineer actually signs off on it, or someone else that is qualified to do so. And some people like that because it's putting the cost of doing that on the property owner, so it is a cost. But that you're actually having that check of there is a engineer who's stamping that, and then they have to submit it to the town, and the town's like, yep, they've certified it, it's stamped. While it's not a complete check of someone going out from the town and checking it, it's certainly the next level up of doing that. Some towns wanna have their code enforcement officer or their town engineer, this is admittedly typically bigger towns, actually go out and do the inspections once a year. You know, you would go out and you would do every stormwater infrastructure that's been approved under this, and have them go and inspect to make sure it's functioning as designed. Or you could do it every two or three years, that's not ideal. Annually would be better. So that, that's where the cost onus can differ with, you just have the property owners, and you say, yep, you have to follow it, and until there's a problem, basically no one's gonna enforce it. You have the next step where the property owner, every year, is having to sign off that, yep, their infrastructure is working. You have the next level, the property owners stating through having a licensed engineer write up a report stating that, yes, it is functioning as designed. That's sort of the next level up, but the owner is still responsible for that cost, minus a little bit of administrative cost on the town if you were to have an annual reporting, because you need to do a check that, yes, they've submitted their report. Then you have the next tier where it can be effectively the town engineer or the code enforcement officer going out and verifying it. Typically, it would be more of a town engineer, only because of usually the busyness and qualifications of code enforcement officers.
I have a question. If the town engineer was going, if we were gonna have the town engineer go and do that, wouldn't we have to have each property owner have some sort of bond to sort of pay for it?
Effectively, yes. The problem with that, and that's one of the reasons my, most towns wanna have it be on the onus of the property owner, you, you are effectively having to hold that bond in perpetuity. It's not like a road bond that you hold for two years. It's not like a landscaping bond you hold for a couple of growing seasons. It's in perpetuity because you want that stormwater infrastructure to function in perpetuity, effectively.
So if we put the onus on the landowner then, and say, you will give us this report from a professional, once a year, at, on this date, then that should cover it? I mean, and then if, if something happens, I mean, if some big whatever comes and blocks it all up and it starts going all over the place, I mean, is anybody even gonna know until the next inspection unless it's going over on the property next door and they're complaining?
So what the report would entail would be them certifying that it is not only functioning, but if it wasn't functioning, what occurred and documenting what was done to repair the infrastructure.
Okay.
Because infrastructure breaking, it, maybe it was installed poorly, the rock at that time, or, you know, the batch of porous asphalt wasn't great for some reason that time. Things happen, so you, you put in that functionality, but they're still responsible. When they know something is broken, in that regard, they need to go and fix it. That report is their mechanism for saying, okay, you know, something broke, we noticed it, then we remedied it. Or we're in the middle of remedying it, it's going to be done by whatever the completion date is.
Is it possible to have something where sort of a mishmash of what you suggested? Where they have to file annually saying that it's, that it's repaired. Every third year it had, they have to file with a, with a stamp on it, unless there is failure of the system, in which case, for the next five years, every year it has to be stamped.
I mean, you could get down to that sort of a tiered system with different timeframes, you could write it that way.
Okay.
You know, just from an administrative standpoint, that can become a little bit more onerous on a town, but it may be a little bit more cost-effective for a property owner. And, and that's the balance, that's the balance.
I, I'm trying to balance the two out here, because part of me is saying, it'd be real nice to, to look at a town engineer and say, yes, go out and, and check every single one of these. However, we do not have a town engineer on retainer, and there's, realistically, there's no way of recovering that money. You send the bill to the property owner for, you know, forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, that's their share of the, the town engineer's time.
You'll be chasing down bills if you do it that way.
Exactly. It would cost us more to get the money back than it would. However, we're not going to put in the town budget to have, to have the town pay for these inspections, because it's not our requirement.
I mean, the other route some, I've at least heard discuss, I don't know if they've actually, is that any stormwater, any plant that comes in for a different stormwater infrastructure, they have basically a fee schedule that the town engineer can say, well, to do inspections for at least a five-year period, this is what the cost would be, and it's a sort of a one-time payment that the applicant can do. But that's not that in perpetuity, so for five years, you maybe have the cost covered. You know, going out twenty years, you still want it to function, the town's basically eating that cost.
And quite, quite honestly, this is my thought. The first five years, unless you have something that was really improperly built, you're not going to have failure of system. It's the twenty, no, twenty, twenty years out when somebody hasn't maintained it.
When the trees start growing in, in, in the detention ponds.
Right.
Honestly, it depends on the scope and scale and type of the infrastructure. Some can fail in less than five years.
Right, but that, usually that type of failure has more to do with construction than design.
No.
Okay. However, I...
Well, I'm sorry, it's not construction, it's the maintenance. It's the rain garden whose porous space has been filled up with silt.
Exactly.
It's the porous pavement that has not been vacuumed and cleaned and swept properly.
Exactly, it's the retention pond that the riprap is covered with, you know, two feet of lead mold.
Filled in with silt and now it's no...
Yeah, I, but I'm all worried about where it is in ten to twenty years, because that's when you're going to have, you know, gee, nobody took the trees, the trees out. Ten, five years ago, we now have, you know, twenty-foot-high trees growing in, I'm thinking of the, the, the piece of property we just looked at, it has three infiltration ponds.
I will say, just that property would not have fallen under this, because it would have been a subdivision, but I...
Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking of...
That, that kind of structure. Because I think, again, it comes down to engineers like those kinds of structures better because they require a lot less maintenance.
Oh, honestly, it's wheels, that all that you have to do is mow them, tend to get maintained fairly well.
Right, I mean, that, that, that's part, part of this is to get structures that are low maintenance.
Well, exactly, and I'm thinking on Pond Street, there are on either side of Valley Drive, there are these huge retention ponds, they do get mowed every year, actually several times a year, but it's, those are, those are large and obvious. The ones on this plan...
These are small.
They're fairly, they're fairly small, and unless, you know, somebody reads their deed and realizes what it is and it's pointed out to them.
They're gonna look like depressions and move on.
Right, exa, exactly.
Yeah.
I could picture somebody actually going out and, yeah, putting a, a sign up that says clean fill wanted. Thinking it's a depression on their property.
Right.
That may not happen for four or five years, it's the, the longer out you go. So I would honestly, as a selectman, rather have something that is annual, they pay, and say, every third year, it comes in with a engineer's stamp.
I'm not even sure that we, I, I guess, some of it may depend upon the type of structure. But for a lot of structures, I think, just, just having the, the property owner certify that it's done is enough. Don't put too much of a extra cost on him to hire an engineer to come and look at, look at it.
Jim, as a real estate agent, I wouldn't sell that piece of property. Would you?
Right.
I wouldn't sell that, but it makes it unmarketable.
What, what, what does?
To have a thing that you have to go and...
That person do, if you buy that lot, now you're locked into doing inspections every year, maintaining it and everything else.
Well, how, how do you feel about it, having, not requiring an engineer, but just you having to certify to the town that, that the, the stormwater system is, is functioning?
As, as the individual in the trust.
Well, see, that's where the catch 22.
But, but, yeah, but I, you know, I think that I'm not horribly inclined to, to put the extra expense onto the, the property owner, and...
That, that's why I was looking at it way of...
And it comes down to if you, to, to me, unfortunately, I think it's gonna be a, a matter of exception, the, the system's going to fail, and then we have the right to go on the property, to set, to send the code enforcement person on the property, to do the inspection, to, to tell them that they've gotta fix it.
And that was the first one, we can have just that.
So if, if all you wanna do is have the maintenance portion of the stormwater infrastructure put on the plan, you can even add a note to the reported page that says you're, you're to maintain all stormwater infrastructure as indicated on the approval of this plan recorded.
Kind of what we just did?
Yep.
Yeah.
Then that's what you can enforce through a code enforcement action.
To me, I think that's enough. I think it's, it's sort of, it is sort of minimal, but, but I think, I think that without causing a lot of extra burden onto property owners who aren't in the stormwater management business.
And they're more, more likely to do it every year if it's not gonna cost them an arm and a leg.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got more overhead for the town, because now you're telling them that they have to send something to the town, so now you have to hire somebody or designate a department they're sending these reports to. Somebody has to keep track of them, so now it's another, more money to keep track of all this stuff.
So in the towns that I've worked with, that's honestly generally fallen to Gail.
That's why I just looked at her.
Sometimes if there's a administrative person in the building, building and/or planning department...
I was just gonna say, the building clerk.
That still adds more hours and more pay and more tracking. So in a couple of the towns that we've done this in, what, what they have chosen to do, and some of them are requiring the engineer inspections, but for just how, how do you go about knowing what has to file a report? The moment that their regulation went into effect, they started keeping a list, and honestly, these, the two towns I'm thinking of have a lot more applications to deal with than you do just because of the nature of the towns. They started keeping a list, I think one of them is up to six things in four years. So we're not necessarily talking a lot of sites. So in June or July, a form letter that says, per your approved site plan, whatever, whenever it was approved, you're required to submit this report under Newton's site plan and regulations, blah, blah, blah. You could put more detail in if you wanted to, that says their specific operations and maintenance plan, or just the note, it gets sent by first-class mail. It's due by September first, your report. And, you know, you could put a form in there with a return letter and stamp if need be.
Now, what, what, what happens if it doesn't, if the report doesn't come back?
So within this, the language is basically, it, it allows, it allows the town, if they don't file a report, whether you want an engineer to certify it or not, if they don't file a report, it allows the town to actually go and do an inspection. So it gives the town the right to go onto the property, do an inspection, that can be code enforcement, that can be town engineer, whoever the designated agent needs to be, and then technically that bill can be sent to the property owner.
Is that not something that should be included on that letter that goes out to say, if you don't get your report back by this date, we will send someone from the town out to do the inspection, and you will get a bill, and, you know?
So just the, the specific language is that if no report is filed by September one, September one seems to be a good date, we've already gone through most of our rate events. Municipal staff or their designated agent shall have site access to complete routine inspections to ensure compliance with the approved stormwater management and sediment and erosion control plans. Such inspections shall be performed at the time agreed upon with the landowner.
Okay, now, I have a question, just, because I know that we're talking about, stormwater is bad all over the place, but aren't we now just worrying about stormwater that's coming onto the road and not like in the middle of somebody's property, or does this everything?
So so to protect for the MS four permit, the town doesn't want to be accepting stormwater from a private site. So this is not just normal flow over the land for, there was a little inferior stream. This is stormwater coming from a private property owner's land that they're producing from their parking lot, being washed down either through a culvert or across the land onto the town road, because the moment it enters the town's MS four system, or your right-of-way, you are responsible for that pollution if it gets into a surface water.
Okay.
And now that's only in your MS four area, there's a lot of other, but that, you don't want that entering onto your system.
I think that, I like Jim's idea of balancing the, the cost burden to the homeowners and also the need to make sure that these are being maintained properly. So maybe an annual statement from the owner, and then every five years.
Well, I was just, you know, I, I, one of the questions for Jen is you've worked with enough towns and the MS four. Part of the problem is, is that if we mess up and we are not in compliance with the MS four, it's a lot of money.
It's huge.
Yes. Twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Are there any criteria with, that came out with that application that says... that says that, you know, gives a hint of what would be considered in compliance and what is not, is non-compliant?
Can you ask your question a different way?
We're, we're talking about all sorts of different ways of, of ma, of making sure that we have records of
So.
whether or not, whether or not stormwater management structures are working or not. And that is, that, that is needed to comply with the MS4 to say, yeah, that we don't have water coming off of private property into roadways that we then have to, without having a plan to deal with them.
So EPA ultimately doesn't care if you're willing to accept somebody else's polluted water. They just care about the polluted water that is on your system.
Exactly.
So the more you, the more you can disconnect or prevent in the first place.
Okay.
Keeps you in higher compliance with your MS4. You do have to adopt site construction requirements and then maintenance. So once, so while it's being constructed and then the long-term maintenance of sites, you have to have those regulations.
But there, there are no guidelines for the maintenance.
The maintenance is that you are not having additional stormwater flow off of what is effectively a private site into waters of the US and for your compliance onto the town's MS4 area.
I want to just say one other thing. I, I think that it is, it is important to think about the cost burden on the individual homeowner, but it's also important to think about the cost burden on the whole town.
The town.
And a budding property owner, if it's going on with somebody else's property and it's flooding because the stormwater system is probably maintained, or we're found in violation of our MS4 permit and then we're getting, you know, fined. So the cost of burden, you have to sort of balance the, you know, the burden on the town and the burden on the homeowner.
Right. It, I can think of some situations in town that luckily aren't in the area, but there's somebody on Widia Street discharging water from a cellar that creates that lovely ice slick. If that were part of our MS4 zone, we'd be sending somebody out there to, to stop her up and go, you cannot have that happen.
Some pumps draining into storm basins is not good, just in general.
Oh, no, this is their just, it, it, it runs down their driveway, onto the street and then, I mean, it can also be, I would like to see it stopped because it's also a hazard.
It is a hazard, yep.
But those are the type of things that we're hoping.
Yes.
Maybe it is every five years. Maybe it's an engineer looks at it every ten years.
And I think that the language that Jennifer read, it, it should say, and I think you already brought this up, that the cost, you know, along with the five-year, ten-year, whatever the time period is gonna be that you decide, the cost will be more by the homeowner at that time. So that this goes with also ultimate homeowners have the place to sell, but on the road people know what's going on.
Right.
Um, that's part of the reason for, if you have any easement. So again, this is not for homeowners unless it's multifamily. So at this point, we're not, that it would be part of their easement. If we got to the point where it's gonna be individual residential lots, then you can also have it be part of their deed as well.
I like, I like the five-year rather than the ten-year.
Site plan regulation, putting this in our site, which, which would be commercial, light industrial.
In most towns that have adopted the equivalent of this for a subdivision, it typically only actually applies to the road. You, you can write it so it would apply to driveways and rooftops on the individual, but typically it's, it's been done, just the road. So like Kinsley Corner would have been unacceptable.
Since you're taking the notes to, to write all of this up correctly, I would like to see, actually, I'd even be willing to go ten years, every tenth year, have an engineer report. Because within ten years, when you think of the, the things that will foul these type of systems, it will be trees, woody shrubs, excess of humus, humus that has accumulated and needs to be cleaned.
So one thing I do wanna point out for timeframes though, is that there are some fire retentions, rain gardens, that part of the maintenance of those, and actually some towns have started saying, we really don't like rain gardens because the maintenance is a little bit higher.
Yeah.
You have to remove in a rain garden the vegetation every two to three years or else you're not getting the nitrogen removal from it because you've got that vegetation that, yes, took the nitrogen out, but now it's just died and it's putting it back into the water foam. So as far as maintenance and inspection, do you need to have an engineer go out to tell you that you need to cut back the vegetation in your rain garden and dispose of it outside of your stormwater structure? No. Is everybody gonna do that? No.
I'm thinking, the, the five years, I was thinking is based on an example where, a town where I work. And it was a subdivision stormwater retention pond that was supposed to be maintained and it was not being maintained. And in five years, the, the, the sideslopes of the pond were so overgrown with speckled alder that you couldn't even see it. And the roots, it isn't just shrubs, but they were big, big shrubs. And the amount of work that was needed and heavy equipment had to get in there to, because the, the, the trunks were like this big. It was all over it. So I think ten years, you could get a pretty good sized tree of a fast-growing species and then you're needing to get in there with a backhoe and reconstruct the whole thing. So I think if you did five years.
Yeah, I like five years better.
I'm just throwing that, I mean.
I mean, it, even without an engineer review, if it says you're supposed to be mowing it and you can, you know, you can drive, someone can drive around, you could even have the code enforcement officer do sort of a visual inspection on one day a year for an hour or two. Just the number of systems we would likely get.
Yeah, actually, yeah, yeah.
It's not a lot. I'm just saying that, that's also an option, but that cost, well, maybe small would fall on the town for something like that.
Okay, yeah, because actually if you think about it, until we adopt this, everything, when we adopt this, everything that exists is pre-existing.
Pre-existing, correct.
Possibly non-conforming.
Right, but if it, but if it starts overflowing someplace else, then it's an issue and you can take care of it anyway, right? Yeah.
Well, the ones we have right now, yeah, we must have, if they're not working, we can go.
Yeah, though, I mean, the ones you have right now are, are meeting a different standard.
Exactly.
But if they're, if, you know, detention basins on Puzzle Lane are completely failing.
Right.
You absolutely could do a code enforcement action.
Right.
This is a little bit more prescribed because it's a little bit, it's a more of a routine infrastructure maintenance than what you would have for your typical parking lot or typical road or culverts. So what I'm getting is I'm gonna at least come back with the option of what, an annual statement and then a, and we can talk about the ti, how many years span, but three years, five years, ten years of having the town engineer, or I'm sorry, I think a certified engineer, professional engineer, stamp a report certifying that the inspections have been done and it's functioning as designed.
And we presently have a couple of examples of the reports because they, like the churches have to fill out an annual report certifying that they are still a religious, building for religious use and therefore tax exempt.
I mean, this could be sort of a, a standard letter that gets sent out annually. I mean, you'd have the list of everybody that has a plan that falls under this. It gets sent out in June or July. By September 1st, you know if you've heard back from them. I mean, there is the administrative aspect of that.
But maybe administrative wise, if there's a set time that these things are gonna go out and be, have to be back to the town, maybe it's something that actually could be put as a form on the website so they can go on. I now, you don't have to wait to collect them or whoever, it could be maybe filled out.
That's why a lot of towns have gone with that. They're all, they're all due on the same date every year. So it's not this, one's due in March and February and July.
Trish, would you know who's gonna take this responsibility over and do it?
Well, it sounds like Dale.
It sounds like the building department.
Or.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's typically where it's fallen in most towns.
Really?
But actually, the, the, the selectman will be deciding that.
There you go, yes.
And I mean, if there's not that many in the first place, it's not gonna be that.
Exactly.
You know? I mean, what, what, what do you think off the top of your head? What do you think the potential number in this town would be?
How many site plans have you had in the last three years?
And we're just talking, this is industrial, right? Commercial. This is commercial.
Right.
And multifamily.
So.
Probably two.
No, Kinsley with a subdivision, not a site plan.
Uh, no, it was, it was multifamily though.
Oh, that's right.
Multifamily and.
Yeah, Kinsley and Puzzle Lane.
That's it.
Kinsley Corner was done six years ago.
Oh, and, um, no, maybe down. Down where, um, the hen houses.
They've got a lot of stormwater.
Is there anything down there where hen houses? Hen house?
We, they, they haven't done anything there in the past two years.
No, I'm just saying, I was asking, is there anything down there? So there are very many places to start with anyway right now.
You only have so many zones in Newton that are even commercial, to be honest.
Right.
Right.
There are a few things in the residential districts that could go in, that could fall under this, but it's pretty.
There are not, not, there's not much.
It's pretty few and four. Well, there's some existing non-conforming things that if they needed to come in.
Well, there's that big piece of property next to the hen house too that yet, is yet to be developed.
Right.
And who knows what is necessarily there.
That, that has potential, but that would be, you know, that, that's one.
That would, well, yeah, that would be one. So there aren't.
It has a retention form.
What, what does?
Redevelopment gets caught in this as well. It's not just new development.
There's no site plan for that land next to the hen house.
Right, but that piece next to the hen house does, well, actually the hen house has a retention form on it. It's all grown in, but it has one there because it drains the parking lot. There's two drains in the parking lot.
But we, we, when, when that was done, we had no criteria for maintenance.
Oh, right, right.
So.
And we didn't even say it had to be made.
I mean, our problem is, is when the federal government says as part of the MS4 in the future, you are going to have to bring all pre-existing structures into conformity. Then, then we're in big trouble.
Yep. So just for people in here, redevelopment of existing commercial sites or expansions, depending on the degree of the expansion, would fall under this because they would need to come in for site plan. And then we've got the thresholds that we've talked about in the past couple.
Right, we, we had discussed that some part B, I believe.
So the section you're talking about now in here is what?
I am talking about honestly sections E, F, and G. And it's really the inspection and maintenance responsibility as far as who's responsible for doing the inspections.
So you're not talking about any specific section, you're just sort of talking in general.
That's the summary of what these three sections.
Well, we could, I, I, I specifically would like at some point to talk about G1B.
So this is basically a, a way that the planning board can document violations, but it also gets into a cease and desist.
But it basically, from my point of view, the planning board shouldn't be there at all. It should go code enforcement to, to the selectman. And, and really, we don't, we don't have a function. It, it, it's just gonna slow it, slow the process down.
So the function of B is that that's that, honestly, the, the voluntary compliance that the planning board can seek out of applicants. You could do that now without this regulation for almost anything, but to do a cease and desist, you have no authority.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying. So, so there's no real need for us to be in, in the loop.
So you think they should go directly to the selectman?
I was just gonna say, yes.
Yeah, from, from code enforcement to the selectman.
I think the reason.
The reason it's.
Having us in there just confuses the issue.
I think it's there because we gave permission in the first place. I think that's probably right there.
The reason is because you know better than the selectmen, and this is a generalization, but you know better what you approved than anybody else in town. That's the reason that's in there. We can take it out, but that's the reason that if you know something is supposed to be maintained, something on Kinsley Corner or Puzzle Lane or whatever, you know that that detention pond was supposed to be mowed routinely and there are cat tails growing there. You know something is a mess.
But we're not gonna find that out unless code enforcement sees it.
You, as the planning board, may notice that there is something that is out of violation of the site plan and you could report that to the code enforcement officer.
So start with the code enforcement officer. And, and having it come here just slows the process down.
If I, only because that, that is one way that we would, we would potentially learn about it.
What's wrong with it going from code enforcement to the selectman and the selectman are asking the planning board, can you give us any information, rather than stopping at the planning board?
If, 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 if the code enforcement can't give the, the selectman all of the information that the selectman need, yeah, they can ask for our advice and that.
Or we, you know, and say, will you go look up the plan and show us, you know, see what you gave, what you approved?
Either that or, or, or code enforcement would probably come and to, to see what the, the nature of the violation was before they went to.
Well, actually, you have, first you have to go to A before we get to B. Simply because A says municipal staff or their designated agent shall secure an administrative inspection warrant. Nobody from the planning board is going to be applying for a municipal administration, so.
My question is, why is that there if, as part of the approval, we already have the right to go and inspect?
I was just gonna ask that.
If we already have the right to inspect, why, why do we need to go to a superior court?
You already have the right to inspect. Honestly, it's a catch to ensure that in the regulation, it's very clearly spelled out. Planning board can then further, I'm sorry, the town can further require the inspection.
Try this again.
So under state law, you already have the right for your code enforcement officer to go out and seek any code violation, including conditions of approval of the site plan. To do that, code enforcement officer as an agent of the select board can go and actually do any enforcement. You're having the inspections be part of your conditions of approval.
Right.
You get, the town has been given the right to go and do the inspections, but if a violation is found, what is the method for actually remedying that violation, that inspection? That's why it's called out in here.
But why do you have to go to a superior court?
Because superior, only superior court can give you, give, give you the right to trespass.
But you're not trespassing. You've already have the right to go, you've already been authorized to go on the property.
You've been authorized, but that authorization can be withdrawn at any time by a landowner.
Because it doesn't agree upon with the time with the landowner. So if you can't agree upon a time.
The.
No, I think someplace else that said, we have the right to go.
Right, right. As a condition of approval, he has granted you an easement to walk on his property.
No, he has granted you the right to do inspections. That's different than an easement. That, and it can only be a con, upon an agreed upon time with the landowner.
Oh, so you have to make an appointment. You just can't go on it whenever you want to.
Exactly.
Right.
I'm going to suggest.
But if there are violations, then you can. The same with like a health code violation. Health code officer doesn't need permission for a landowner if they've got a health code violation.
Yeah.
So this is saying you should go to.
This is a safety.
So this is saying you should go to court if you think there's a violation, but you don't know it yet and you need to go look?
Right.
Correct. And this is just because the property owner hasn't given you permission to go on it.
I'm, I'm going to suggest this is a possibility. In G, start, start off of item one. I may be overstepping my bounds, bounds here. But municipal staff, building department staff, because they're the people who code enforcement is under. I would remove their or their designated agent, shall have site access. That way, we're pulling in more than just the planning board. They are used to the, the idea of going for administrative warrants because. They are used to the, the idea of going for administrative warrants, because they actually have to on it on regular occasions, and by state statute, they are allowed a certain type of administrative warrant. That way, if you get to B, violations of non-compliance are found, the building inspector shall supply a report to the Board of Selectmen. Documenting these violations and recommending corrective actions. The Board of Selectmen should be responsible for notifying the property owner in writing of the violations. I'd really like to reword that last one, so that the Board of Selectmen, well, not normally...
How about the Board of Selectmen may seek out the planning boards?
Well, yeah, I, I want to make sure that there's a way for the Board of Selectmen to inform the planning board when there is any sort of non-compliance or documentation is needed. And actually, you could then leave the, if correction, corrective actions are not completed within a certain period of days for, for the selectmen.
C is only with the planning board, selectmen don't have the right to revoke.
No, no, no. But the, the selectmen can then ask the planning board to revoke. Only the selectmen really have any teeth.
Um, no, the planning board has teeth to revoke. It's a very last-ditch resort for the planning board, but...
What, what I'm thinking is, is that the, the selectmen try to do what they can first and save that C as sort of a latch, last-ditch effort to enforce.
To enforce it before you revoke the whole thing.
Right.
We don't ever want to get into revoking if we consider it.
That, that, well, that's...
Well, beside that, what does that really do?
Revoking?
Yeah.
It could shut down the entire...
It completely shut down a business.
Yeah. Your site plan has been revoked, you have a structure, your employees may not enter the property, it's as if the structure does not exist. I just think that this way, you have the, it involves the people that are actually responsible for the MS-4 a lot more are involved, so it's not just the planning board always being the heavy.
Well, what if the, there's some areas of town that aren't covered by the MS-4, right?
Correct, but the way we're writing this, it would apply to the entire town.
Right. Now, I will, I will have to bring this up and make sure that the Board of Selectmen...
Right, that's my point, like, I don't know, we should tell them exactly who, like, municipal staff, that is, you know, a wider range in saying, the, the building department or inspector has to do it.
If it's already typed up, the Board, the, the selectmen can change the wording and send it back to the planning board, but if we don't start off with a recommendation, we could get mired down in people trying to decide who to...
So we still need to actually, I need to go through and clean up the entire thing based on our conversations. So this is really draft one.
Exactly.
In addition to what we've talked about tonight. I'll go through, I'll make sort of the second draft, that's the Newton-specific based on our conversations.
Yeah.
We'll go through the entire thing. If you want to send sort of the inspection maintenance aspect, I mean, the select board can comment on everything, but...
Once you have everything retype...
That's okay, you can comment on everything.
I'll, I'll take that to the Board of Selectmen at the same time, so that we're working in concert.
Does that seem like a reasonable next step? I'll type it all up, you guys can have it to review, we'll go through the whole thing at an upcoming planning board meeting.
And you don't have to have it done until next year.
It's not going to happen for in two weeks.
Well, we're not going to meet in two weeks, it's Christmas.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not meeting until next year.
We're not meeting again till next year.
Sorry, it's an old pun, I had to use it.
Okay.
She just didn't realize that.
I, I...
This is the la, this is our last meeting this year.
We just handed through this week. Sound like a plan?
And I can let Nancy know, because the other day I told Nancy that this was going to have to go up a warrant.
No, it's not.
And she was, she was counting pages.
No, 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 I already told her it's not.
Oh, okay.
She asked me that, and I said, no, I said, this is just, this is a regulation, has nothing to do with the warrant, don't worry about it.
Oh, okay.
Jen and, Jen and I already had that conversation.
Clarified.
And I already told Nancy that.
We're maintaining this page with the criteria, because that, that is, that's sort of like an appendix to something earlier...
Yes, yes.
In here.
Appendix A.
Appendix A, we were going to actually build into it, so...
And the last page goes away, I assume?
Yes.
Page 11.
Of course. All right. And she'll get you copies the next time. Sorry, we didn't think to have some for you in the first place.
No, we didn't know what we were going to do here, we're trying to keep tabs of when you're discussing it, so at least it is.
Got January 8th in my head.
Did you pass that to Gil?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Even put it in order. Even put it all in order.
Thank you. Does, yes, Merry Christmas. Does the Board have anything else?
Wish everybody seasonal felicitations.
Just say Merry Christmas. Would somebody like to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas.